A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a prayer, Mr. Striebe, please.
Finally, we come before you this evening again. We are just grateful for what you've done for us here in Frederic Town for keeping us safe so far from the COVID. And, Lord, we just pray you continue to keep us safe and keep it out of here away from our kids and our staff and our parents. And we just, we come to you first for that perfection. And we're just, we're grateful for the provisions, the finances, the great people that we have from the top to the bottom when it comes to the school and parents and kids. And we are just grateful and thankful. Tonight, as we go through the agenda to keep things running, we just pray we're about to our will and that we are doing things that are right in your eyes. And we just pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, do you want to call the meeting to order? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Blanchard?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Striebe?
Here.
Okay, before we do the adoption of the agenda, um, under item nine, superintendent consent, item I has been removed. We have to strike item I. Other than that, the agenda stands as is. And does anyone else have any additions or changes that they want to make to the agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
So move as corrected. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Item four, we had a chance to look at the minutes from the previous board meeting. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to last month's minutes? Hearing none, I need a motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Item five, we have some special commendations. Uh, we have, are receiving a $500 donation from the Salvation Army to the elementary for unpaid school fees. Much appreciated. I think they do this for us every year, is that correct? Yes. Okay, so I need a motion to accept that donation. Allo.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to items six and seven, which is the treasurer's report and consent agenda. General, you're on.
Hey, uh, revenues did exceed expenses during the month of September by 35,000. This was mainly due to the receiving of the rollback and homestead payments for, um, in the month of September. State revenue will remain at the same level as fiscal year 20. So moving forward, um, as we, as it was projected in the five-year forecast at the end of the year, I stated that I was going to aim higher on the cut in revenue of 450,000. The revenue will maintain at it, what, as it was in May of 2020. So we're only going to be receiving the reduction of 213,000 during fiscal year 21. So moving forward, um, that will change the forecast because it was deducted at 450,000. And then starting with 22, we should receive at least half of the funding to come back to where it was in fiscal 20. And then moving forward by, they're saying, knock one wood, by at least 22, that we should be at full funding as we were at the beginning of fiscal year 20. So, um, that will make an impact. The large expenditures during September, um, the majority of them were COVID supplies. We did, um, buy some supplies from a new company, was Hilliard. And then we had CCP books, AEP, and then other maintenance supplies and food service. It does help that we have the ESRA grants and the CFR grants, which is the COVID-related grants. Both of those grants will have to be expended by December 28th with the final expenditure report due December 30th. So far to date, um, we have spent, well, altogether, it will be 200,000. But right now, we've spent 82,000 between Chromebooks, um, online learning, and COVID supplies. We do have still 198,000 encumbered for those supplies as well. Um, we have more textbooks that are encumbered with the Chromebooks still have not come in. They're still on back order, which, are they coming in smoothly in November? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
They're beginning in December.
And, um, Neil has ordered four scrubbing machines, so that will help as well. And that will be coming out of the ESRA grants. So all of that is part of the 198,000. This has helped take some of the burden off the general fund, even though these may not have opened supplies that we may have purchased out of general fund if COVID didn't happen. But with the monies that we're receiving, um, we're very fortunate that we do have these monies that it did alleviate from the general fund. And now every kid will be one-to-one with a computer or Chromebook with the help of this grant and additional textbooks along with that as well. Do you have any questions regarding any of my financials for September? Those are the big items. Um, I am submitting an amendment to my certificate of resources and appropriations. It's for the broadband grant. The broadband grant will be providing hotspots for students in need. Um, actually, Brenton received them today, or might have been yesterday afternoon. And he's been getting them ready, so that will, that will be right around 30,000. 27,000 will come out of the grant. The remainder will come out of general fund. Um, and again, this grant has to be expended by December 28th. Uh, I did attend a payroll and benefits workshop, uh, last month. The big ones that are the main topics of that was the COVID leave that is now reportable on our 941s and on the W2s. Uh, any kind of leave that is associated with COVID, they get 10 days automatically. And then anything above the 10 days, then it will be taken out of their sick leave. But the 10 days is, it's not charged to sick, it's not charged to personal, it is strictly COVID leave. That leave then has to appear on their W2 and Box 14, and it will also have to appear on the new 941. Um, I have set up, I worked with another school district to help set up like a tracking on how, who takes it, how long their leave was, um, so we will be able to report that on the W2s correctly and the 941. Um, it's been a little bit tricky. Then I go into, uh, the other part was really on how we are going to handle the leaves even going into next year. But as of right now, all of those leaves are supposed to stop at the end of the year. So we'll see how it progresses into FY, or actually, 2021. They haven't given any kind of release on how, if this, you know, continues, how the leaves are going to be handled in 2021. Everything stops in December. Um, our wellness monies, they, uh, we will be partnering again with the ESC of Central Ohio. Uh, Brent will be taking over the wellness money, which is wonderful. He's actually made some purchases and got some requisitions in the system already. So that has been great. And, um, I was able to set up where every Friday now, everyone gets their budget automatically emailed to them. So it's just set up that every Friday at 4:00, all department heads get their budget, what the original budget is, what has been spent, and what has been encumbered in the remaining balance. That is all sent to them every Friday at 4:00. So the new system is coming along, trying to still work out. It's a learning process, but we're getting there. And that is everything.
Anyone have any questions?
Heather, can you talk a little bit about the five-year forecast? You said it's going to have a new look starting in 2021. Have you seen a preview of what that is?
They're supposed to give a preview in January.
Okay.
Of course, the, the five-year forecast is due next month. It has to be submitted by November 30th.
Uh huh.
And then again, it'll be submitted again in May. So they're going to be changing the look of it in January for everyone to have a little bit of a panic and see how we're going to convert all of our current into this new look. But I was wondering in how they're going to change the look because there isn't much to the forecast unless you're going to break it down by complete object. Instead of having everything like 3.01 being all personnel services unless they break it down to like, this is your teachers, these are your classified, these are your administrators, these are your coaches, subs. That's, that's what I'm trying to picture in my head, but we'll see if they're actually going to break it down to that detail. It'll be interesting. But I thought I would let you know that the look is supposed to change next year.
Who's working on this? Do you know?
ODE.
Who's ODE working with?
They didn't say.
Okay.
I'm hoping that I, there's a company out there called Five Cast Analytables, and it has Ernie Stolzer and Mike Sobel and everybody. Since they're so in, you know, entwined within ODE and OASBO and OSBA, I'm hoping that's the company that they're working with to get the new look of the forecast going.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve the treasurer's consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, items eight and nine, superintendent's report and consent agenda. General, you're on.
Good evening. We are getting ready to do an English Language Arts Course of Study 612. And so we are looking at the learning standards. We'll be looking at assessments. We'll be looking at current materials and looking at what are the needs for the future. We are also not meeting this year for the district leadership committee due to COVID. But we will be continuing our goals from last year. Those goals include implementing a social-emotional framework as well as engaging in weekly nonfiction. So, um, last year it was really about research, learning, and implementation. And so year two, which is this year, we will be implementing and doing data collection. And then next year, we will be monitoring it with fidelity and revising and adjusting. So we will, we will still continue the plan, but it will be more at the building level and not having, um, teachers come out for district leadership committee meetings. The online digital academy numbers are decreasing. And we're seeing a pretty significant decrease at the elementary, which is expected. And so we are going into the end of the nine weeks this week. And as a result of that, it gives students the opportunity to come back. And also, we are allowing high school students to come back now instead of that this semester. So we are happy to have our students back. And so we are currently, as of today, and these numbers are really for the kids who are going to return on Tuesday, um, we're going to be down to 17% of our students on online. And a month ago, we were at about 23.5%. So we went from 103 elementary on September 8th to 49 students in the online on Tuesday. The rest of those kids will be coming back. Senior night is for volleyball on Thursday. Um, Mount Gilliard is closed, I think, through today due to COVID. And so the K-Mac, I believe, has been changed from Mount Gilliard to here for cross-country. So the K-Mac championship is going to be here on Saturday for, um, cross-country. The drama play is coming up on November 5th, 6th, and 7th at 7:30. It's called WCKY. It's like a radio station, um, play, and so that's coming up. The agenda tonight is a lot of routine things, so a motion to approve, a resolution to participate in the Meta Solutions Cooperative Advertising. While that is for buses, it's routinely funded every year. Not that we're planning to buy a bus, but in the event that we would need to, that would, um, be taken place. And just renewing a food service, purchasing co-op, um, approving an EMS link food service point-of-sale annual fee. Uh, we are purchasing the Alex personalized learning platform for math for three-year access. Um, we have some personnel changes. And then we have the supplemental, which is an advisor for recommendation for approval to the ward. And that completes my presentation.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about that Alex? If, you said it's for math?
Yeah, so Alex is a program for math, and the teachers have been wanting that for several years. And due to COVID and just the, um, in the event that, um, we would go to a hybrid or go to distance learning, um, we just need to be able to support our students with online math materials. And so we were able to use, um, some money from the grant.
Correct.
And we switched some things around to support, um, this initiative. And we were able to get a really good price for a three-year access to that. Alex is a well-known educational platform and program. And it's well-respected, has been vetted, and has been around for a while. And it's just a really, really strong program. And so the teachers are thrilled.
So how is it being delivered here? Is it replacing curriculum that we already have, or is it in addition to, or su- or?
It's, it's a supplemental, and so the teachers are using it now. And then they will, they would be using it more if we were going into a hybrid or if we were doing distance learning.
Okay.
So they would be using that more as a primary.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to approve those superintendent's consent agenda. Allo.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 10, committee reports. Mrs. Miller, you are up first for legislative.
Okay, um, you all should have gotten, uh, an email from OSBA on September 23rd, um, that talks about the delegate meeting being Thursday, October 29th via Zoom. And what's in there are the proposed changes, um, for the OSBA platform. And so what I'm going to do is, just in case you lost that, I'm going to resend that link to you because it'll have the strike throughs and the bold highlighted changes. If there's something you want me not to vote for, or to contribute contribution in terms of conversation around questions, I need to know that before the 29th. Because I'm going to have to send that in ahead of time if I'm going to be, um, putting something in there. Um, the U.S. District Court concluded that the territorial transfer law enacted in 2019, 2020 through the biennial budget violated Ohio's constitution in a decision based on a lawsuit between Plain Local School District Board of Education and Dewine. And I'm thankful. I think that's a good thing. Um, Governor Dewine has authorized a study that will focus on K-12 students who are quarantined, um, which is based on the CDC's definition of what it means to become, uh, into close contact with someone who's tested positive for COVID. They're really looking at the impact of this on our K-12 students. Um, and he said it was in response to concerns that the superintendents brought up. Do you know more about that, Susan?
I do not.
Well, here's my thing. I watched his presser today. Um, I don't do that very often because it's discouraging to me. But what he said today was, um, things are going to remain as they are, at least through July. That makes no sense to me, but that's what he said. Um, I even checked in the con, you know, conversation feed. Did, I just hear him say July. Yes, they all said. Um, so, um, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing. Thank our custodians, thank our administrators. Um, and I'm just really hoping something shifts before July. Um, the other thing is the department has reduced resources regarding the third-grade reading test and the end-of-course exams. So sometimes parents also get resources and connect to resources there. So that might be a good communication, uh, if we check it out and see that there's something there for parents that they may want to look at. So then I had a question, Heather, about these, this grant that we got, the broadband grant.
Yes.
And I know I've asked a couple times, but I just want to make sure I don't. I want to make sure that, based on what he said today about the extension of all of this, um, I'm not going to say what I'm thinking, of all of this decision-making around COVID for schools, particularly K-12 students, that we have monies for the technology that we're going to need. Because if we have to have it all spent, I don't know how long the broadband, if we pay for it, if we're still going to be able to have hotspots throughout the region, how, or the district, after we've paid everything, I don't know how long the contract is good for. That's what I'm saying.
It's for six months.
Yes, that's what I saw.
So, um, it begins now, and it'll go for the six-month period. Then after that, it's like, I believe, is it, the whole thing, was it 150? Tell me if.
What we were.
No, I know the whole bargaining deal is 27,000, but like, our portion at the end was only 3,000.
Like 3,000, so you said.
3,000.
So that'll take care of the last three months of school, basically.
Yes.
So it will cover the rest of this year.
Yes.
Okay. And then we've taken care of the curricular needs, it sounds like, that we've anticipated, especially with the one-to-one, and putting that on all of those Chromebooks, so kids have access to what they need.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. I'm done. Can I get any seconds?
Yes, everything that could be taken out of the grant for curriculum-wise technology. And the big one was sanitation. All of those grants will be spent. Actually, they're all encumbered right now for the remainder of the school year. That would go over and that will last us for the whole school year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Granted.
Okay. Finance Committee. Charlie, you want to give an update?
Oh. No, no, hold you like you mean. I'm lying dead. I'm sorry.
We, we met, um, this past, we met this month, actually. I just don't think when we met. It was this month.
Yes.
And, um,
Went over the budget process.
Budget process, yes.
What is going to be needed for the remainder of the school year. And, um, as certain budget line items that were, maybe we didn't quite understand or that we didn't know that we, that we paid. Um, one of them was that we do pay for delinquency taxes for every time the county auditor puts in and adds that delinquencies are out there and we have to pay for those. Um, what a board member.
Collections.
Yeah, for, and for the collections. And that the county auditor also takes a percent of what we collect as payment for her, for, for, it's almost like an administration fee. So that's her portion. It's ver, I mean, it looks like a lot, but compared to, we get almost 2 million and she gets about 80,000.
It is.
For the whole entire year. That's for the whole year.
We talked about five-year forecast also, understanding of what the more five-year forecast.
The, the line items that, um, we do have control over and the line items that we do not have control over, which really is, the revenue is all based on, um, property taxes and what's the monies that we get from the state. So the big line items that we can't control are, are expenses.
Anything else want to add, Charlie?
No, I just think there are a lot of things in there that we didn't fully understand what they were for. We're going to learn what they were for. And just to hear how the process is working now, and the fact that they'll get their budget every week is good. They can see where they're at with their spending. Susan has a big part to play in that now. She's kind of grabbed that by the ears and said, you know, here's, here's what you guys got. What are you going to need from March? I think you said you started following your budget in March. So they'll be off and running on that again. And just a little more warmer in front of you that somebody has a handle on that compared to.
We were a little shocked there were 15, 15 different budgets to, which we didn't know.
Yeah, there was a lot of different budgets.
Yeah. So that was a lot of experience. It was an educational finance committee this time. Okay, Jim, Parkson Rec.
Um, really don't have much to add, and it's quite enough time of year. We're actually not even having a meeting tomorrow. Can't seem to get up to it.
Okay. Uh, Susan, Community Development?
So the Frederick Town Community Development Foundation met on October 1st. I was unable to be there. It was a 7:00 evening meeting. So we're trying to do some in the morning, some in the evening to make sure people have opportunities. Um, the next one is on 11/5, and it's back to the morning meeting. But the, um, items they talked about was the IRS did accept our application for the 501(c)(3) conversion. And Ryan will be sending an email requesting a vote to allow Frederick Town now to be absorbed temporarily by the Frederick Town Community Development Foundation. And another item was that they're doing a membership drive, and it's going to take place in the fourth quarter now. And so they changed that timeline of the new membership year, which will be from January 1st to December 31st. And that's about, those were the highlights from the meeting.
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. McLean, Career Center. Are we going to pass to Jeff?
Our biggest news, today was our first day with all of the students in the building. We had been in hybrid, and still somewhat hybrid. We're going four days a week, all the students, all the time, additional safety, you know, measures in place, lunch room, all the different things we had to do. But we're excited, you know, to have all the kids back in the building at the same time as we are. And we're going to do that as long as we possibly can.
Good. And then your packets, you have, uh, Mr. Gary and Mr. Caputo's, um, reports. So business advisory, Tom or Charlie?
Yes, um, this was the first meeting for Jeff Gotti to lead after Kathy Yotis, who had been there before, that was the leader of the meeting. Uh, she got a new job at Career Center, um, being a guidance counselor for the adult education end. Um, so basically, he kind of wanted to kind of regroup the group. And for the next meeting, we're supposed to talk about goals for the next year. And he wants us to come up with measurable goals, you know, for what to do for the next year. And then the, um, the biggest thing on the student end was the Sean McCutcheon, who is the new coordinator for the, um, students that try to find different careers and all of that. Uh, he's doing this employer spotlight series. And they have these employer presentations from the summer manufacturing camp that they're doing weekly live features for manufacturing and healthcare companies. And, uh, they're published on YouTube, Facebook, and Zoom. And, um, each presentation is about 30 to 40 minutes, and it can be shared during the school class. Um, and what he's doing is he's reaching out to a lot of the ag teachers in the county and also some of the English teachers in Mount Vernon. And he just said that like, for some of the English teachers in Mount Vernon, it may replace a research paper with a research project about local. they replace a research paper with a research project about local businesses. So, it's kind of cool how they're trying to get the local businesses into the schools to advertise for the kids. And, um, he said it's been rather difficult this year because of all the COVID restrictions of actually getting to go into a lot of the schools to meet with the kids, um, because of the, all the COVID things. But this is a way that I think he's going to be able to try to reach them online virtually and still reach out to the students.
Okay.
Is it possible that he could also include our project need for A's?
Uh.
Would that be appropriate for?
I would think, probably a good thing.
I would think so, too.
Yeah.
Maybe we can give them a warning.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Sounds good. Okay, uh, Mrs. Miller, policy?
Nothing.
Nothing, I know. Uh, Mrs. Slader, EIA?
Um, we had a classic affair last week, but work with Susan, and she approved the affair. She came down and helped with kindergarten shop. Thank you. And Mr. Caputo helped with, um, some of the P DAs. And, uh, it was, considering all the COVID restrictions and not being able to have a big grandparents' week, it was, it was a success. We did over, a little over 8,500. Pam from the PTO assisted with that as well. She gave up the contest, gave us that ton, wrapped up the prizes. I don't know.
Great. Charlie, anything from Opsy?
No.
No.
Not tonight.
You're quiet tonight, not today.
Yeah.
All right. All right, that brings us to item number 11, public participation. Anybody? Anybody? No, okay. That brings us to our favorite part of the agenda. Uh, German, I need a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Striebe?
Yes.
Right on 30 minutes, you win, Mrs. Miller.